Thank you.
Mr. Number two, please. Presenting the citizens' plea to the court. Two hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Regular claim, one million four hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighteen cents. For total, one million seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and ten... excuse me. Six hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents.
Second. Scott, one question, Mr. Appleston. Second question, Mr. Hahn for the group of plaintiffs in court. Can you dispute? All赞成, all opposed, same term, closing period. Okay, that brings us to our work document agenda and the first item is citizens' comments. If you would like to address the court on anything that is not on the agenda this morning. If you're here to speak for a specific agenda item, we'll allow that one. Are your comments on anything that is on the agenda for the jury?
I don't have any on the agenda. I'm talking about the water issues in our county. I'm talking to the authority director elected from Debraun Falls.
Gilken, if you will, please state your name for the record and what your comments are.
Cheryl Gilken. Okay, thank you. And I'm glad to have an opportunity to speak because this is a crucial time for our environmental health and for our water resources. This county has significant challenges right now at the quarry hearing. The TCEQ and Vulcan representatives were talking about mountain water that they were going to use. And this is a permit that involves using water to control dust and air pollution with models that just make totally absurd assumptions when we see the recent quarries that already increased their total production amounts from the hundreds to the tens of thousands for each permit. And now this one coming up is also in, it'll be five thou... this one's gonna be three thousand three hundred. The two quarries, the two quarry permits from Anderson, Columbia come to over five thousand tons per hour. And when at that hearing, this recent hearing in Debraun Falls, the Vulcan representatives was asking how much water they're gonna use to do this spring. And they said around, they said, well, the first year we're gonna do less than half production what's allowed annually. And it's gonna be around thirty thousand acre feet per year. So you multiply that by two, at full production, it's around sixty thousand acre feet just for, just for a spring, not including all the other operations that need their engines cooled and all of that. And this is, this is a huge amount of water. And these production rates are all based on something you can address now because the public comment period ended, but the period where you can address what's wrong, what they need, where our county leaders and our public leaders can certainly address TCEQ before they have their final decision, not only just write a letter about wanting a contested, write contested case hearing, but also that you need to, you need to tell them that they've got false assumptions in their models and they need to, to do more homework. They need to provide more information about what our water demands and supplies are here. We only have clean water for those quarries from the Edwards Aquifer in this area. Now, where's that gonna come from? Is it gonna come from our Debraun Falls municipal water supply being sold for a higher rate? Is it gonna come from their water supplies against other communities in the counties? When their supplier would rather sell for a much higher rate to the quarries instead of them, and we do not have safe, good quality water for us to drink besides the Edwards Aquifer when we're in drought situations? And our rivers and our lakes are all depending on these springs and our aquifers too in most times. So, so keep in mind that when they do all that last thing, when it's not regulated, there's gonna be a lot of breaking water lines and sewer lines. Okay.
We do have a resolution on the agenda concerning the Vulcan quarry at forty-six and three double nine.
My husband's got a doctor's appointment, I have to leave. And, but do keep our water, water secure.
So, do you have comments related to that issue? We ask that you make those comments.
It's more than the sustainable yield of the whole aquifer. You add that up for all these quarries.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Well, that's America.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the court on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, we get them out. We will move item number two in our work document agenda and that is reported by County Staff and the立法 officials on items of community issues. Does anyone have anything to report?
Okay. This is the harbor. John Hart says we were able to get the three thirty-seven, the separation of the three thirty-seven River Road on the Tithman coming out of the pack. It's pretty busy on Monday and it's still on there hopefully on November twenty-sixth. Very impressive, impossible, we're gonna keep it on there, ten point four million dollar project. And then after that, we'll try to get it done as soon as possible because the Tithman is from nineteen twenty-two, hopefully get it in fiscal year twenty or nineteen or twenty and do, hopefully get it done while we're doing this. So, so far so good. But maybe it's a, be it a term, maybe it's a...
Anything else to report? If it is not, we will move back into, back to the agenda. And it looks like we have quite a few people here to address that. Back to the agenda, item number twelve. So, period no objection from the court. We will leave that item up for consideration. Period no objection, we will take up item number twelve, which is discussing, consider approval of resolution number two zero one eight one one concerning area quality permit number one four seven three nine two L zero zero one, which get approved with authorized construction and operation of a four hole crushing plant located at State Highway forty-six and Barbarian Road three double nine. Would we like to introduce this item before opening up our public comment? Do you guys think it's coming to say the same thing?
No, I would like to make one comment that entire commissioners' court worked on this resolution. It wasn't one of the list of two, it was the files that were commented. We don't have input as to what went in there. And we also consulted our attorneys on the order of it and what we ended up putting out there. That's my main concern, put out this form.
Well, with that, I believe we probably have some folks that would love to speak to this item. So, I would ask that if you are speaking on this item, that you come up one at a time, unless you have someone assisting you, if that would be okay. We also ask that you leave your comments to three minutes. And depending on the number of speakers, I might hold you to that three minutes. Sometimes if we just have one or two people, we relax that a little bit. But today, it looks like there might be about two people that wants to eat. When we come to the podium, we ask that you state your name for the record. We are here to listen to your concerns and your comments, but we do ask that you be respectful to the court and that you're not attacking anyone, not attacking any member of the court or anyone for that matter. And we will be respectful to you as well. It is not necessary for everyone to come up and say the same thing over and over. We do have a thirty-minute time limit on public comment on any particular agenda item. If we hear that there are more and more things being said, then we can relax that thirty minutes as well. But if we hear that the same thing is being said over and over, then we probably won't hold that thirty minutes, thirty minute time limit. So, with that, if you wanted to come to the podium, this is not the audience, okay. Okay, so whoever would like to come up first?
Good morning, Mr. Harris.
Good morning, Judge. Scott, Kevin, Jim. Well, we're here again in a while. You know, when the early German settlers got here, they settled in Debraun Falls because there was two rivers, because the water was clean, and they thought this was the perfect place. One of the other things they found out about Debraun Falls, because the Germans had great builders, is it has limestone. And the limestone is at the surface, and that limestone is called Edwards limestone. And just below that limestone is the Edwards Aquifer. When you do your resolution, you just need to say no. Don't listen to what your lawyers say. Before we started this meeting, you took a oath and had something like under God in it. And God doesn't control everything that we do, but God gives everybody the tools to make the right decision. And the right decision on this is, they're putting a quarry in the middle of residential management. There's billions of dollars of property taxes that don't get included in how this quarry is done. But you have your toolbox, according to Mr. Kyle Beederman, which a lot of us already do. You can regulate the health and the safety of the county. You can say, no, we do not want the quarry. Don't use your lawyer's terms and skirt the issue that, oh, they did the best, the strongest TCEQ regulations there are, because the TCEQ regulations are based on nineteen seventy-three data. And they're not controlled properly. In nineteen eighty, the TCEQ, EBA, and the Federal Clean Air Act did a study. And the best way to control quarry does is to enclose the conveyors, so you don't use a lot of water. This is a study that's out there, you can read this stuff. So why aren't they spending that kind of money on the conveyors and the rock crushers? Because they only put out three million dollars in their quarry budget when they submit to the TCEQ. They don't want to spend a lot on people. They're not really people like Walmart does. They're gonna employ twenty people, every guy has a managerial subcontract. So they're not providing anything to common counties' benefit. You guys heard that they're not gonna give you any money for the road? We know for a fact they gave Madera Cack in California ten cents a ton. So say no. All the quarries are here on the south part of the Edwards, the Volkanos and the Scarpment. That's what this quarry needs to be. Tell them, no. Don't say the best standards. Just say no, period. No, and this quarry is gonna, and they're gonna guess what you say, if you just say no. Forget what the lawyers say.
I might point out that there's a block right here on the lower portion of the screen that'll help you finish up your comment.
I just wanted to put this opportunity in. The country is one of these, and I moved into Debraun Falls after the permit was unfiled. Unlike those that choose to live next to existing quarries, I didn't have that choice. I wish I had, I wouldn't have moved here. But I have more to my story. I spent my career practically sitting as an environmental engineer all of that in Texas and all over the United States. I've seen this kind of thing everywhere, and I've seen all sides of the story. I was the project manager on the first job management plan in your county for Edwards. That was a long time ago in the late eighties. At that time, the county didn't say let the ranchers in San Antonio take all the water they want and dry out the springs, because recreation was your livelihood here. The population was about twenty-eight thousand, and it's now, we know what it's, what's happening here. This is also now my first exposure to rapid growth in Texas. I was in Austin in the seventies and eighties. They said no to growth, they didn't stop it. And they learned a very hard way that they could do control of local, they were having lots of problems with water plants polluting everywhere. Eventually, I could take them all back. Our growth is driving the need and we understand that. And the need and the availability of that together, close together, so that lowers transportation costs. We need you, the county, to provide forward-thinking vision and leadership for requests from state legislature, the specific local authority to protect the land, the air, and the water for current and future generations. That's the most important thing we're talking many years. Most of this will be good then. So you've got to start now. What can most certainly be last, and what's an adequate plan today could be a batch concrete plant, and most certainly will be if you look at their growth plan, or an asphalt plant. Is that what we want in our community? I have proposed modifications. I'm gonna give you a copy to your three items. I split, split number one into two items, and I've just added a fifth. And they correspond to what the county wanted. For you to request, not for us, we've done it with the father comments in time, you've already requested our intensive hearing. We need you all to support us, and we need you to request one. What we have to lose for the odd period of time for them to be officially considered, no harm or foul, they disregard it, so we're asking you to include that. I know that would be another item that allows you to basically begin the process to request state legislation.
Thank you.
It's not that time to request a specific.
Please take all these, oh, I'm calling more from Smith and Valley. Please take all these constituents seriously, even if there is no quarry in your area, because if you have a big piece of land to sell, they'll be coming to sue you. Vulcan does not vote. They might have fifteen people in Colmell County that will, but Vulcan does not vote. They spread a lot of money around, but they don't vote. I agree, and everybody here votes. I want you to know that I do not care if you're a flaming liberal LVGQ person or a lawyer or conservative. I do not care what your stand on abortion is, or what, if you're trying to make America great again. I vote for someone who will help me stop large companies evaluating my property and ruining my health. For these reasons, I encourage you to do what Mr. Beederman said, to work with his office in order to get something in place to protect our hill country. I do think people are gonna stop coming to this country if all they see is a rock crusher. They will not be coming from all over the world to see a rock crusher. They'll come to see the hill country, not a quarry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is David Drew. I'm, uh, thank you for bringing this resolution to the table. I have a formal discussion on it. As I'm sure you know, this is a matter of high importance to make on county systems. And I sincerely hope the action you take on this issue is not too little, too late. The first question isn't too late. TCEQ is currently in the process of responding to comments and rendering this decision a air quality permit application. The public comment period ended on this, on February twenty-seventh, so you missed that deadline by a couple of weeks, and it's highly doubtful that any action taken by Commissioners' Court today will be considered by TCEQ prior to their decision. However, there will be a thirty-day period following TCEQ's decision, during which requests for contested case hearings will be accepted. I'm hopeful that the court will also go on record during that time period to make sure that any actions and resolutions are taken into consideration by TCEQ at that point. Is this too little? Mr. Webb, in your recent email to me, you wrote, "I have no interest in passing a resolution purely for political purposes if it does no good other than to get people off our backs." I agree completely. Any resolution should be meaningful and effective. I have to draft a resolution from your website right here. Unfortunately, it appears to be just another worthless, empty gesture. The draft resolution merely asks TCEQ to do what they have already, what they are already required to do by law, and passes the buck to state legislators. I can honor a Vulcan attorney, I have no problem with this resolution at all. In its current form, this resolution is definitely too little. For this resolution to be an effective action, Comal County must directly request a contested case hearing. TCEQ Rule Section fifty-five dot two five six states that governmental entities, including local governments and public agencies with authority under state law over issues contemplated by the application, may be considered effective persons. As I mentioned in previous communications, you all, other counties, including Kendall, Huron, and Burnet, have all directly requested contested case hearings, so this is hardly an unprecedented action. Honestly, I'm having a hard time understanding the reluctance for that, Commissioners' Court to do this. If you pass this resolution as currently drafted, it will be just another independent set of words. I urge you to support Comal County citizens. Postpone the decision on this resolution until next week's meeting, and work with your constituents to make this a meaningful and effective resolution. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Good morning.
Great job.
Judge, Judge Nurse, my name is Don Armagh, I'm a fire engineer. And I would like to ask that this resolution be able to, for the time being, you have some different documents that are out there today that you could do. I'm here to offer, offering for you to pick out some of your constituents, representatives, protection team engineers, geologists, geoscientists, and we have experienced people writing legislation, and we believe we can help you and the county create a stronger resolution and legislation that will stop the quarry. If you look at the engineering aspects of this quarry and this property alone, there are some major engineering issues, not only from the environmental piece, but the geological piece, and it needs to be stopped now for the trees. Too bad for that for us, and the water issues, that too needs to be considered. Our mother is much more evolved than the TCEQ, and our group believes we have the experience and the technology of all the successful companies. Thank you, Ms. Drew.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning. Judge Ward.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dr. David Higbee. I'm a physician, I practice internal field medicine, and I commit this from a very professional perspective. We're all hung up on this air quality issue, but the air quality is based on data that's twenty-five years old, and it's only within the confines of the fence of the quarry. So we know that things have changed over the last couple decades. Things that we thought were not harmful twenty years ago are harmful today. This is recently known all over again. Some of you know about this, best of stuff, this is gonna be trouble. Nobody seems to care of the water issues, drying the walls, water contamination, and there is virtually no criteria. Even the Edwards Act, where he has no say-so over how much water they use, or how they dispose of the, etc. I am very upset with all of you. I sent all of you an email, December eighteenth, expressing my concern, wrong email, never heard from any of you. Then I sent another email to Dr. Eccleston, which was very testy, and I apologize for it. She said she responded to me. I don't have any record of that, but anyways, we talked, she didn't call me the day of February tenth. So my question is, why are we coming on the bandwagon once before we should have? This is terrible. This is terrible. Public hearing already heard, and we're drafting this resolution, it has no meat, no meat. Granted, there are quarries all over the place, but none similar to an aquifer, or an aquifer or a charter. The second thing that you need to understand is your air quality controls from federal government, your company will not be, if you're going to do enough, then I bet you the whole company will not have this quarry put in place. And those are major, they're about thousands of federal dollars, okay? So we're at risk of losing all of that. So my request to you is that we come on board with something that has meat in it, not this crap right here, and I hope that all of you would respect our rights, our needs, since you're all supposed to be doing that for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Susan Randolph. My husband and I are citizens of Colmell County and live approximately four miles from the proposed Vulcan quarry at forty-six three double nine. I'm speaking to you today, request specific language in the draft resolution regarding the Vulcan quarry department number one four seven three nine two L zero zero one pending issue by TCEQ. Regional growth is driving the need for products of the aggregate industry, and we understand the desire to have these types of operations located in proximity to each other. However, we also have a city, county, and new groundwater conservation district that have not been forward-thinking enough to have anticipated this inevitability. Vulcan will certainly not be the last to try to take advantage of our big deal compared for this explosive growth. There are clear risks to environment health and quality of life with the surface mining that Vulcan poses. TCEQ appears similarly ill-prepared and empowered to enforce state law that will protect areas under high pressure for growth demands. Since the state of Texas has no requirements for evident mining, Comal County Commissioners' Court should request the authority from the state necessary to ensure sustainable development that benefits everyone. The current draft resolution two zero one eight dot one one does not send a clear guiding message to TCEQ in their consideration of Vulcan's air permit to advocate for your concerns, voice quiet citizens. Commissioner Beederman has challenged you to solicit input from constituents and devote language that enabled, when enabled this. When will this happen? My request is that the Comal County Commissioners' Court or with its constituents to revise the resolution to TCEQ in their consideration of Vulcan's air permit along these lines. When will this happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge.
May I approach and hand you a handout? Judge. I just, I know you all need the comments, I didn't know what to do.
Good morning, thank you very much. My name is Bill Calvermeyer. And what I came to do is a, this is the third page, is a submission from a constituent that is in the press. So that's my hand to do her feedback. My specific issue is, given the fact that you've prevented Comal County to stop the development of Vulcan, I respectfully ask you to take this resolution for the following reasons. If they don't provide direct and substantial language to the TCEQ as to exactly why, you the Commissioners find this quarry to be a health hazard and a water and air standard problem, you have the capability to address that. If they don't provide direct and substantial language to the TCEQ as exactly what you the Commissioners will do in favor of your constituents. Health and hygiene, when the TCEQ fails to implement more stringent standards as they are able to do through best management practices, because this is an NSR, they have the capability to increase their standards during this process. I do not count them holding the capital in doing so, you can. If they don't provide direct and substantial language addressing the key responsibility of new Commissioners, as many people have spoken here today, if you can and have the power to institute language through the process, Representative Beederman, to access local control, we are asking... are able to do to best standard practices, because this is an NSR, they have the capability to increase their standards during this process. I do not count them, hold them accountable for doing so, you can. It fails to provide direct and substantive language addressing the key responsibility of you commissioners, as many people have spoken here today. If you can, and can't, and can't, to institute language through the process, Representative Beadleman, to access local control, we are asking you to please engage in that activity. Finally, unfortunately, I missed the formal deadline, I don't understand that at all. It's impossible to mean that a formal deadline is present on the campaign, there is no excuse to that. Therefore, reconsider that the resolution as it is currently written is hollow, TCEQ will not consider it, it's not worth the paper it's written on. Within the next sixty days, by May twenty-first, we believe that the RTC will be forthcoming. We want you to meet with the members of Stop Three Double Nine Vulcan Quarry and have us together work on language regarding special use permits which extend to the unincorporated out areas of Comal County. We want you to help, we want to help you write a proposal that has meat and substantive language to protect us. We want you to help us and let us help you write language for Representative Beadleman for local control information, so that that bill can be written to support constituents because this is not the first quarry. There will be more, and there will be more to Sina Ash Plants, which are rubbish plants. Please, in a recent email, we asked you to also include contested case hearing. You have the opportunity to do that once the RTC is issued. In summary, your failure to table this resolution on that one will involve us and...
I'm just going to take my time for comment. Thank you. Let's start with the camera.
I'm a resident of Venejo, a little about two and a half mile from the proposed quarry site. Thank you for taking up the issue. It is a weighty matter to consider, but must say that wording is totally inadequate. Thus reflect the needs and safety concerns of the overwhelming majority of the citizens in this county. It's appalling that the language is very nearly cadent to the word in the city of the Bronfels resolution in respect of TCEQ's permanent application. It completely fails to adequately address the very pressing need for affirmative county leadership on the issue using marginal language that merely reflects a fungory attempt to satisfy an embroiled constituents. Second, the Comal County Commissioners' Court's home website linked Guide to Civics Law for county officials states, and I quote, "Commissioner's Court has responsibilities related to water supply, irrigation, drainage, waste disposal, clean air, and agriculture." It further states that Commissioner's Court may make a recommendation to the TCEQ and bring about enforcement actions under the Clean Air Act. And further, that counties have the responsibility and the duty to enforce water quality control and protect water quality. I don't see any of this reflected in the draft resolution that we have proposed. Third, you refuse to consider to honor your constituents' concerns that you've been repeatedly voiced to you over several months, and this draft resolution will be interpreted as not being responsive to your citizens. I therefore urge the Commissioners' Court to table draft resolution twenty eighteen eleven and work to revise it to reflect the need of Comal County residents. Additionally, I urge the Commission to work on a comprehensive plan for local control that can be submitted to the Texas Legislature. Consideration. Thank you.